I'd like to call this public meeting order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would everyone please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community, especially Rosemary D. Michelle and Mary Rose Lucci. We want to send our condolences and our prayers out to both of their families. We also want to take a moment of silence for all the people in our community and our country and our world who have passed away from the coronavirus. Rule call, please.
Mr. President?
President.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Goh.
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A. Ministers of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority, regular meeting held October 6, 2021. 3B. Single tax office city funds distributed 2021, dated November 4, 2021.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yes, I do. The city is organizing a vaccine clinic from 10 to 2:00 p.m. at the Reserve Center. That's at 1801 Pine Street on November 11, which is Thursday. And we'll be having help from the Scranton Primary Health Center and the State Department of Health, Moderna, Pfizer, and J&amp;J vaccines will be offered for first shots, second shots, and boosters, Pfizer for five years of age and above, and the flu vaccines too will be offered as well. And then there's also going to be a wellness event, and that will take place at West Scranton High School on November 14 between 12:00 and 4:00 p.m. You're required to have a mask during this event, and then there'll be COVID and flu vaccines for all ages. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just a reminder that if your garbage pickup is Thursday or Friday this week, that it'll be a day behind because DPW is off in observance of Veterans Day on Thursday. And also a reminder that DPW workers are hosting a Thanksgiving food drive that will benefit families in our community through Little Sisters of the Poor. Drop-off location for the food drive is Neyog Park across from the pool entrance, and the drop-off dates are this Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 to 5:00, and next Saturday and Sunday, the 20th and 21st, from 9:00 to 5:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There will be a public hearing held at 3:00 p.m. on Tuesday, November 16, 2021, in city council chambers here at City Hall. Testimony will be heard regarding the Act 47 Coordinator's recommendation to the Secretary of DCED to rescind the city's distress determination as of January 2022. Mr. Volenberg?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Thank you. The first speaker tonight is Joan Hodeawanitz.
I just want to start off first by wishing all the veterans and their families a happy Veterans Day. I think it's never too often to thank the people who defend this country and preserve our democracy. Can you update us on the status of the audit?
They're waiting on the audit from the redevelopment authority, or the sewer authority. One or the other, I can't remember.
Okay. And do you think it'll be out before or after you get the proposed budget?
I'd say after at this point.
Oh, darn.
We're gonna get it on Tuesday.
All right. And I checked the city's website this morning. It's still missing the parts of the labor agreement for the firefighters.
So I did get an update on that, and they're just working on rectifying and putting it all together to put it up there.
My understanding is that the union contracts for police and fire expire at the end of the year. Are negotiations in progress?
They are.
Okay. All right. With regard to 5C, the peer grant for $10,000 for a parks and trail accessibility study. I think that's a good idea. I understand from the backup that the city will provide 10% matching funds. My comment on that legislation is what you need is not just an accessibility study for parks and trails, but you basically need a safety study for the entire city for pedestrians because that's what most of the background talked about, you know, sidewalks and bike trails and this, that, and the other thing. Now, I've lived in downtown Scranton since 1999, and I walk just about everywhere downtown. I can remember three cases of people killed trying to cross Lackawanna Avenue, and another one killed on the corner right here in a wheelchair, I recall, okay? The city needs to take a look at issues like traffic lights and poor pedestrians trying to cross the street, especially you've got a lot of elderly that live downtown, use walkers, use wheelchairs, walk slowly. We're gonna have more accidents if something is not done. How many times has Ron Elman come up to this podium and mentioned the safety issues with no sidewalks in his neighborhood? If you have to walk, and you have to walk out on the street, you take your life in your hands, so, you know, this is good legislation. I have no problem with it. But sooner or later, we need to address the issue of pedestrian safety throughout the entire city because people are getting hurt. And with regard to 5B, the lease agreement with Deutsch Institute, I like that too. Where is Robinson Park?
It's on East Mountain. If you go all the way up East Mountain Road until you can't go any further and take a right and keep going down.
Okay, so is that the 98 East Mountain Road?
Yes.
Okay, because it's all the address of the Deutsch Institute in the contract. I saw that the institute's going to have a million dollars in general liability insurance. Does this mean you're gonna remove Robinson Park and its two-story building from the Knowles Insurance Contract?
They, I don't know. We'll find out about that.
You should, because like the public library, we don't want to be double-insuring buildings. That's just a waste of taxpayer dollars. And it said with regard to renovations that they will take place as funds become available. Who provides those funds?
The Deutsch Institute will make any improvements.
Okay, so they will then pay for those improvements themselves?
Yes. Now, there's a, the city went for grant funding to rehab Robinson Park, but we're talking just about the building.
Okay, so this is a three-year lease, and I think it's a good idea, but just make sure we don't double-pay for insurance. I don't like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would imagine too, just to add to that, that the Deutsch Institute is probably gonna apply for grants towards rehabbing the building on their own, too.
Good.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lee Morgan.
You know, the first thing I have here is, I don't know if you've been paying any attention to the Russia investigation, but, you know, Hillary Clinton may find herself...
Mr. Morgan, excuse me.
You don't know the context of what I'm gonna say.
Well, I just want to preface to tell you before you speak, if you could somehow tie the Russia investigation and Hillary Clinton to the city of Scranton...
The city should name a street after Hillary Clinton.
City business.
Because if we have one after Joe Biden, and people in the country, his approval rates are 38%, and the vice president is 28%, and we've got people in the country yelling, "Let's go, Brandon," or just profanities in regard to the president because his job is so subpar, just so terrible, that the country is in a freefall, and on the world stage, he's a laughingstock to the whole world, and he's gonna go meet the president of China next week. We're gonna see how that goes because it didn't go very well in Alaska. And that's the person you've named a street after in the city, and the ramp that comes into this city. It's just atrocious. Now, I think it's very important for the residents to understand one thing here. As we get ready to exit Act 47, we need to have a thorough investigation of where we were at the time we entered Act 47 and where we are when we left. We lost the golf course. We lost parking garages. We lost the sewer authority. We lost various other things. And I think it would be important for this council to do an analyzation of where we were and where we are. And the other thing I have here is the Home Rule Charter Commission, Study Commission, that's gonna change the charter from the city, has to take place, without a doubt. And when you write this charter, you have to put certain things in it so that the council has to do what the charter says. And if we have a mayor at that time, or if we don't, if we, if the charter, if the commission sits and it decides that it's gonna have a council president act as mayor at times, and they abolish the office of mayor, there's a lot of things that can be determined here. We have to realize one thing. We have to do something about property tax. There's residents, all in high rises, that at one time lived in a property, most of them did, in the city. They couldn't afford to pay their taxes. We've got a city whose tax base has been eroded by corruption, in my opinion, over an extended period of time. We have a councilman like Mr. Gohan who wants to control public speech, who doesn't seem to understand what freedom of speech actually means. But maybe you should educate yourself, Mr. Gohan, on exactly what that means, because my rights don't come from you. They come from the Constitution, and this council was warned by the judge not to stifle free speech here. And I had that discussion with your clerk. You have no respect for people, and you think that you can tell people what they should say and what they should think and how they should express themselves.
No, I just said, keep your comments to city business. City business. Nobody wants to hear...
No, no, that's not what the judge said.
Nobody wants to hear...
The judge said something totally different, and your decision does not stand over the top of a judge.
You don't, you don't have to...
Mr. Morgan, you're out of order.
Excuse me.
Your opinion does not stand over the top of a judge, and neither does yours.
You're out of order.
No, I am not out of order.
The president of council controls...
The judge determines what can be decided here and what can't. Not you, not the police officer sitting there, and not the council president.
Then go get an order, okay?
No, I don't need an order. The judge gave you one, and I asked your council clerk to produce it, and you don't have it.
You're out of order.
Mr. Morgan, Mr. Morgan, calm down. You don't have to yell.
No, I am not, I am councilman.
Well, you're screaming into the microphone. I can hear you fine.
No, no, let me say this to you. You do not tell a judge what he's gonna do, and neither do you.
Well, then you go down to the...
No, 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 no. If I go down, you'll go with me, and then you'll show, tell the judge why you showed defiance to his order. It's not my order, it's his, and it didn't have to do it one council, it had to do it all of them going forward. Do you know what that means? You're not turning.
You're out of order, okay?
Yeah, excuse me. Sit down.
You're out of order.
Have a good night.
This is the only five minutes of the week that people actually have to listen to him.
Yes, yeah. Supreme Court Justice Lee Morgan. Anyone else want to give us their take on legal proceedings and Fox News or anything else? Would anyone else like to address council? Come on up.
Tom Koinmanouka. It's gonna be a little anticlimactic after that, but I'd like to talk first about the Deutsch Institute. I think that is actually a fantastic idea. It's a fantastic use of a city resource. And reading the proposals that originally called for a monthly fee, I understand the document before you has a yearly fee of $1. It's kind of silly to have it as the bids, the bidding contract called for a monthly fee to be paid, which is 8.3 cents. So those documents don't quite match up. In looking at them, it's, even though this is a park from the city, it seems the trash collection is changing over to the Deutsch Institute. Considering what they do for the city and for the disadvantages, disadvantaged, I would hope the council would at least consider having the park services or the trash company, the DPW, continue trash pickups at that facility. I don't think that, even though it, even though we could charge for an, have them, have an outside hauler, I don't think it would be that much of an impact on the city to actually stop by there with the truck and pick it up. They are doing a service for the city and the city's people, and I believe that would be a just compensation for the city to extend one property stop for that facility. And last is, you're going to have the directors from various departments come forward. Is there going to be an opportunity for citizens to submit questions to council so that citizens can get their questions answered from the directors rather than just council themselves asking the directors, void of a representation from people's questions?
Sure, yeah, you most certainly can do that.
Awesome. What method would you prefer for questions for council, for the directors, and if there's a list of when they're coming in? Is it possible to put notice out there so that we can submit them a week beforehand?
Yeah, there was an advertisement in the newspaper, I think, Sunday, Frank, was it? Yeah, there was an advertisement with the listing. We can give it to you after the meeting. Another one should be in this Sunday with a list of when they're coming. But if you want to email us the questions, we'll forward it in advance to the departments, and then hopefully they'll provide the answers.
Could it just be also for their, for the meetings? Could you also just attach it as a note to the meetings for next week?
Sure.
Just so that anyone has it?
Yep.
They will have a copy of it for the notes.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Would anyone else like to address council?
Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. I want to bring up televisions again this week. I have three defunct televisions. I'm perfectly willing to pay to have them taken care of. I don't want to throw them out in somebody else's lawn like people do. Oh, that's right. There's also a monitor for a computer somebody dumped off on my front lawn. Mr. De Naples doesn't seem to want to do his job. I mean, he's supposed to be running a recycling center, and I called a couple months ago, and he says, "Oh, we stopped that." Well, isn't that grand? You know, now what do you do with all these televisions hanging around your house? You know, thank compliments of Pennsylvania Power and Light. They blew them out with their power surges. So I'd like probably try and call the mayor on that, and I think we need to possibly get in touch with, with the county, too, because they're involved with that. But they just keep piling up, and I walked a doggy a couple of times last week, and I started noticing there's televisions all over the courts. They're just sitting behind houses, and they've been discarded, and they'll probably sit there forever. So at least you should have some kind of opportunity to get rid of them. COVID. The official from MSNBC News tonight was 1 million by March. 1 million people dead by March. You know, we got all fired up when some wacko walks into a mall and there's 10 or 15 people, which any death is unfortunate, but Fox News seems to be spreading a lot of disgusting propaganda and picking on Big Bird and everything else. I mean, you know, it's just a shame. People should wear their masks when necessary and get out and get vaccinated. It's just not going away. And that's part of the problem with the country is we're not, we're not set free from this, and it just keeps going on and on and on. And I don't know if these people realize it, these newscasters, but they're, they're like saboteurs, you know, just throwing a wrench into the gears and watching everything break apart. And I'd like to talk a little bit about social security issues. Is that okay?
If you can tie it somehow back to the city of Scranton and city business, be my guest.
Yeah, it's, well, you have enough people on social security in town here. Last September, and I don't plan to yell about it, by the way, a president declared it was unnecessary through presidential order not that you didn't have to collect social security taxes. Well, it was exposed that he also intended to possibly try to curtail them. Fortunately, he's not here. But anyway, the Social Security Fund and Medicare funds would have been bankrupt by 2023 around June. Now, you could just imagine if we have 10,000 or 15,000 people in the city of Scranton roaming around with no money to pay their bills, no money to pay their taxes, nowhere to go, what would we do? You know, it would be a total disaster, and it'd be of our own making. I mean, sometimes if elderly relatives can stay independent, it's a big plus. Take my word for it, you know? I had a heated argument one time with an elderly relative. They told me that Bosnia wasn't a religious war, it was the Christians and the Muslims. So we all turn into Archie Bunkers eventually, and hopefully I won't be too bad when I get that way. Have a good day.
Thank you. You, too. Would anyone else like to address council? Mr. Volenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Councilman Schuster, any motions or comments tonight?
I'd just like to say Happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans here in the city, and then just one citizen's concern. Mr. Volenberg, I just sent over 1829 Cedar Ave. I got a complaint about that maybe a week or so back. I sent it through, but it never, it never seemed to make the list for, for the Lips Department, so I resent that, and we could follow up on that later. That's all.
Thank you very much, Councilman Schuster. Councilman McAndrew, any motions or comments tonight?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I would also like to wish all the veterans a Happy Veterans Day. Thank you for your service this upcoming Thursday. Now, I want to just circle around with two concerns I've been bringing up for the past year or so. So I'll start off with, we have, we received an update on the 3rd on the 1149 Sloan Street rear illegal garage operation. So, and like I stated in the past couple of meetings, this has been going on for over a year, and it's, the activity is very dangerous, what's going on. So the response I got in the summary that we've been receiving, which I'm thrilled that code enforcement is now providing us with updates, but all it says is, you know, Mr. McAndrew asked about it, occupants, I said occupants are painting vehicles and operating a garage at this location. So all I got back was, it was discussed with zoning. I don't know what was discussed. And then the update states, received additional serious concerns from several neighbors. So I'm glad to hear other people are coming forward, but that, that's, to me, is not an update. I want to know what the next step is. I know what the previous steps were supposed to be, and I don't think they occurred, so if you could please follow up on that for me to get more clarity on what that means, that that update means, because it concerns me. And then, secondly, about a year ago, there was this nuisance property, and it was 125 127 North St. Francis Cabrini Avenue. So the same residents that reached out to me over the past years share the same concerns. Actually, there's, there's more police activity that's been going on there, and they would like to know if there's an update on that because they were supposed to take a good look at it. And then also, within, within the same stream there, I was, I was asked if there's a property next door, it's a vacant property, and the residents aren't sure if it's owned by the city. And if so, could you just find that answer? They'd like to know that, if you could inquire about that.
I will, Mr. McAndrew.
Thank you, Mr. Volenberg. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments this evening?
Just one comment. It was a property that was included on the list that we received an update on from OECD, and it, one of the properties, it said it was, was just like Linden and Harrison Avenue, and said that it was condemned, and there was a hit-and-run there some time ago, but I believe that was the wrong property, not the one that I was inquiring about or that I received a complaint about from a resident. So if we could check on 1600 Linden Street, that is catty corner from the other property that I believe was, that we received a note on, and this one just has a lot of, a lot of overgrown grass and weeds and shrubs that are right on Harrison Avenue, and they are really getting quite high, and I think there's a, an empty garbage pail somewhere in the mix there. And that's everything that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Donahue. Any motions or comments?
Yes, first, I would just like to wish all the veterans out there Happy Veterans Day and thank them for their service. Also, I was happy to see last week that Congress was actually able to put an end to Infrastructure Week after five years with the passage of a bipartisan $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill. Mark Steyer, who's the director of the Pennsylvania Budget and Policy Center, which provides independent analysis on state budget matters, went through the bill and created estimates based on the formulas it contains. He projects that the state of Pennsylvania could receive a minimum of $17.8 billion in new spending allocated as follows. $11.3 billion for federal highway programs, and $1.6 billion for bridge replacement and repairs, another $2.8 billion over five years for public transportation, $171 million to add electric vehicle charging stations, at least $100 million that could increase broadband coverage, which is vital for Pennsylvania, $1.4 billion to improve water infrastructure, as we've seen that is desperately needed within the city of Scranton, $355 million for the state's airports, $49 million to protect against wildfires, and $26 million to prevent cyber attacks and investments in weatherization and energy efficiency. This is long past due, and it is absolutely must-needed, so happy to see that, you know, they could actually pass some bipartisan legislation in Washington that actually helps real people and affects their lives from day to day. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Donahue. Just to answer, I think it was Ms. Hodeawanitz's question last week about the temperatures that are now getting into the teens and the, I think it was the Code Blue program that you had mentioned. So Mr. Volenberg did check into it. The city employs a Code Blue program for unhoused persons when the temperature reaches 20 degrees and below, including windshield, at the Weston Field House on Providence Road in Scranton. And then the county website indicates the additional locations below Anthony's Haven, 409 Olive Street, 7:30 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Those are the hours, and the community... Intervention Center, 445 North Sixth Avenue in Scranton, 8 AM to 6 PM. Last week, we asked about the, the Al Young situation on Wyoming Avenue, and, and there's a garage the city had issued an emergency declaration. So per the OECD Director, Attorney O'Brien is still working to get the gentleman to allow the city access for demolition of the garage. The city has hired a contractor who has posted a bond and pulled permits. So that's the latest update that we have. I had also asked about the fund balance policy and the investment policies, some of the things that were recommended by the Pennsylvania Economy League under our Act 47 distressed cities designation. The city did get back to us that they had finalized their drafts of the fund balance and investment policies. They're presently undergoing one last review by PFM, which is the city's financial advisor. They should be forthcoming very soon in the form of ordinances. I also asked about city employees on workers' compensation. DPW, there's 19 employees, Police Department 14, Fire Department 13, and the Clerical Department, there is one. The city's paving list is up on the city's website, scrantonpa.gov. I know there was questions about that. So if anybody would like to look at the list, it's, it's pretty extensive. I spoke to Mr. Preambul recently and was told that that paving project is going to begin soon, very soon. One of the streets on there, two of the streets on there that I was very pleased to see that we've gotten complaints about numerous times over the last few years is Boulevard Avenue and Oliphant Avenue. So finally, the, the city is doing something about those streets which are in terrible condition. And finally, like my colleagues had, I want to wish everyone a Happy Veterans Day, especially my dad, Jack Gahin. He is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, and the Marine Corps, coincidentally, tomorrow is its 246th birthday. So I want to wish the Marine Corps a happy birthday and semper fide. Thank you. Mr. Volenberg?
5B, for introduction and ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with the Deutsch Institute Applied Research Centers for the handicap for the use of the premises known as Robinson Park located at 98 Mountain Lake Road, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, for a three-year period commencing January 1st, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2024.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, on the question, I was very pleased to see this legislation. I know that the neighbors up in this area and the members of the East Mountain Neighborhood Association had been looking for someone to occupy this, this beautiful building that they have at Robinson Park, and the Deutsch Institute is a perfect fit. As was mentioned tonight by several speakers, they do a phenomenal job in supporting our community here in the city of Scranton and in Lackawanna County. So I want to thank them. I think it's a perfect space for them. And also, this goes in conjunction with the fact that the city is trying to make a major investment in Robinson Park. Robinson Park is one of the most beautiful parks that we have here in the city of Scranton. The playground equipment is outdated. There needs to be several updates there, and I know that there is a, an effort underway through the East Mountain Neighborhood Association in conjunction and in partnership with the city to get the funds to do that. And I think the addition of the Deutsch Institute just adds on to the great things that are happening up on East Mountain. Anyone else?
Yes, on the question, I also wanted to add that I had, I'd heard about this some time ago from a board member who was interested in setting up a lease with the city for this property, and I am really happy to see this on our agenda tonight. I think it'll be a great use for the space, and I think they have some good plans for renovations, and I hope they can get the funding for, and just really looking forward to it. I'd have to admit that I have not been up to Robinson Park before, but I definitely have to, have to make the trip. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I'm thrilled to support this legislation. I was also in contact early on with a board member and thought the concept was great. I'm glad it's come to fruition. The Deutsch Institute is, is a fantastic organization. Over the years, I had the pleasure of teaching cooking and baking classes for their disadvantaged clients at the Career Technology Center. They had seemed to have a, a great organization where they, where they have people that do a lot of great things. I think this will be a great space for them to continue that work. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the city of Scranton application for a peer grant from the Trust for Public Land in the amount of $10,000 for a park trails accessibility study, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, on the question, I'm going to support this grant. It's a no-brainer. What we've seen over the last few years is another big investment into our park system. If there's one thing that the city of Scranton is, I think, known for, it's the fact that we do have a vast and wider range of parks throughout our neighborhoods, which is unique, I think, in some respects to the city of Scranton. We have a lot of green space, a lot of playground equipment. There, I think we have 30, over 30 parks. So this grant is going to study how we access our parks. The, as Ms. Hodawannas mentioned earlier tonight, the pedestrian safety, linking that to the Heritage Trail that we have, which is an enormous asset here in the city of Scranton and in Lackawanna County. So I am very pleased, and I think this goes in hand in hand with the park study that McLean Associates is currently undertaking, and I think will be completed very soon. And I think we need to continue to invest in our park system. Anyone else on the question?
Yes, on the, on the question, I'm also happy to see this piece being introduced tonight. It is, it's really important for us to identify the areas that we need to improve in accessibility to, to our parks and trails, because if, if those are barriers, we want people to be visiting and utilizing the parks as much as possible. And if they're not going because they don't feel safe in, in getting to the park, then that's, that's an issue. And I think that this study will be helpful in identifying where we need to focus on that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, no business at this time. Eighth order, 8A, file the council number 88, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and Bedrock Technology, aka Keystone Technology Consulting LLC, to provide information technology management services.
Thank you, Mr. Volenberg. This piece of legislation is currently tabled. We discussed in caucus tonight that Solicitor Hayes is continuing to, to look over the legislation in terms of amendments that we had discussed with him, and we'll take a final vote on it before the end of the year. And we also want to hear again from the IT Department, which will be coming in in the next two weeks.
8B, file the council number 89, 2021, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license R14696, currently owned by Michael A. Mecca II, and located at 224 Erie Street, Dunmore, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18510, to Galley Family Food Mart, Inc., the food mart, located at 801 Cedar Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18505, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
Thank you. This piece of legislation is currently tabled. There will be a motion next week to take it from the table and place it in seventh order for a final vote. There's no further business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, and have a good night.